Welcome to the Board of Trustees Workshop Meeting. It's the 23rd of March, 2001, and we have an agenda set out today. I'll start with the introduction overview, so welcome. The meeting is being recorded and will be made public to the public on all crests. And the next item on our agenda is to opportunities. Members of the public suggest additional topics for discussion or to address topics of interest with a presentation limited to three minutes. I have not been forewarned of anybody. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move to item number four, and that's a police recognition oath of office. And Chief Bruggen is here somewhere. I talked to him a little minute ago.
Number three, Chancellors.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Yeah, well, I got, who cares about the chancellor?
That's what I say.
Chancellor's update. I'm sorry, Jim.
I brought my wife this morning so that she could see I really work. So anyway, Nancy, thank you for coming. Dr. Carter, you are on with DOJ, Americans with Disabilities Act. She has a quick report if she wants to share with us.
Good afternoon. Just to, before I give you some background, in January, we received from the Department of Justice a settlement agreement as a result of a compliance review they conducted a couple of years ago that would bring us into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. And so by way of background, in April of 2018, the college received a letter from the U.S. Department of Justice indicating that CTC was selected to participate in a specially-designed initiative to ensure access to veterans with disabilities to colleges. And so specifically, the effort is called the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, Veterans Access Initiative. I almost said Veterans Success, excuse me. Veterans Access Initiative. And so the disability rights section of the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division has worked with public colleges and universities across the country to help bring them into compliance to ensure appropriate access for students with disabilities. The review was not prompted by a complaint. There were no one complained, but rather it has to do with the large veteran population that we sell, that we serve, and we're sure our proximity to Fort Hood. So it, that's how we ended up on their radar, so to speak. It's important to note that though we worked with an attorney at the Department of Justice and we received a letter from the Department of Justice, it was, it was a non-adversarial, non-contentious, but necessary investigation that was, was conducted. And the focus of the investigation was on the central campus physical structure to determine accessibility to our disabled students. And Ms. Deborah Shibley, our in-house counsel, she coordinated the college's response to the Department of Justice ADA requirement. And the process of the compliance review included three components. Number one, there was a request for documents in which we provided information on our programs and primarily our facilities. Number two, there was an onsite campus visit by the Department of Justice representatives where for two days in May of 2018, they literally walked our campus. They, they went through the buildings, they went into rooms, they went around the buildings, the roads, the sidewalks. They, there was not, there wasn't an inch of this, this campus that they didn't walk through. And then the third piece, component of the process includes the settlement agreement. And basically, their findings are, were captured in a report by the, the lead attorney at the time, and an agreement listing the out-of-compliance items, if you will, was supposed to be submitted to CTC, and we were supposed to begin remediation. Well, that was in 2018. The report was completed in 2019. The person retired, and it got lost, I guess. And so the Department of Justice obviously is playing, playing catch-up, and I'm sure the pandemic didn't, didn't help it. So we received it in January. Mr. Harmson is leading the effort in terms of mediating those issues, if you will. There were 134 pages of items, many of them repetitious, though. Same item, multiple rooms. And so he's already begun the work to, to make those repairs. This agreement is for three years because that's the amount of work that we have to do, and we'll also get to spread the cost over, over three years. And part of the requirement is that we hire an independent architect, separate from PBK in terms of inspecting the work. And this, this architect will be approved by the Department of Justice. We go through our regular process in terms of selecting the architect, but that architect has to be approved by the Department of Justice. And so Mr. Harmson is working with Mr. Gonzalez on that, and they will provide that information to Deborah Shibley to, to forward on to the Department of Justice. So that's kind of where we are. Any questions?
I'd like to, go ahead.
I wanted to ask you, I know that there's, there's costs to make some of the changes that are necessary. Was there a penalty?
No, ma'am. And that's a very good question. The, and that's the reason for the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement is in lieu of them filing charges against us where there would, where it would be punitive and costly. With the settlement agreement just basically says, these are the items you need to repair, here's the timeline in which you get to do it, and then we get to take care of business ourselves. And as long as we follow that, we should be fine. And so Mr. Harmson, he has an agenda item to talk about the design work for the, for the, for the project, and he'll touch a little more on that.
I'd like to commend Dr. Carter and her team for not, I guess, for engaging with the Department of Justice to get us to where we're, where we're at. You know, one of the, one of the things I said, and she and I, when, when they were going around looking, we were concerned that they would identify two things, and that was elevators, one in our dormitory and one in the, where the student registrations center is. And neither one of those were on, on the charts. So I don't know how they didn't do that, but thank goodness they didn't. Those were, that would have been the high-dollar things to, to put elevators in there. So, but the things are just, as you can see at the bottom, she's giving you some examples of things I found, but if you have to go around to this campus and move every one of those dispensers down a foot, I mean, that takes a lot of time and money. So anyway, want to thank her and her team for, and Deborah Shibley for looking out after our interests with the Department of Justice. We'll get this done.
Thank you.
Any more, any questions? Okay, sir, that completes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Now we'll go to item four, which is recognition, the police, Chief Manick is coming in. We have a oath of office to administer to all of our security police force because we got new badges and we want to make sure that everybody is on the same sheet of music. So I will go forward to the podium up there.
Yeah. If you're taking pictures, I don't know who is over there with their mask on, you can come up here, you can come over here and take your pictures.
So if I may, I just want to say a few comments first. First of all, good, good afternoon, this is board members, Chancellor Yanopoulos and Deputy Chancellors. I just want to take this moment to recognize our officers and telecommunicator to establish one of our progressive steps in advancing professional policing and legitimacy. Our new police badges, all of them have a new police badge that we're going to be transitioning to. The Central Texas Police Badge is a symbol of public faith. Our officers value the badge as a public trust to follow the principles of integrity, fairness, and impartiality in serving our community. The badge is unique to our police department, and each badge is personalized to each officer. No one else is going to wear this badge. As General Weaver administers the oath of office, this is our reaffirmation that we as Central Texas Police Officers and Staff embrace our highest priority to foster and promote a standard of excellence in policing and legitimacy, building healthy relationships with our students, staff, faculty, and our community. General?
It gives me great pleasure to be able to do this for our police force. As you all know, when we had the bad weather, the only people that were really on campus were the representatives of the police department, and they'd not been here. I think we would have had a regular disaster than we already had. So thank you for your due diligence, and thank you so very much for what you do for public service and specifically for service to Central Texas College. I'll just say this, I heard you do your report. We're going to talk about that in a minute, but good job. Is there anyone present who does not believe in swearing? Okay, then I will read you the oath, and you search your name when I say aye.
Aye.
Insert your name.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties?
Execute the duties.
Of police officer?
Of police officer.
Central Texas College District?
Central Texas College District.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability?
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
And the rules and regulations?
And the rules and regulations.
Pummigated by the CTC Board of Trustees.
Pummigated by the CTC Board of Trustees.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, you are now officially sworn in.
So thank you, and let your badges shine brightly.
Every day, sir.
You guys want to take pictures with your family?
You can get up closer, go up there.
Don't be shy. So they took their mask off, okay? They all had their two shots, okay? So we're good.
I guess, Chief, I think they took pictures.
Okay. You guys were dismissed. Thank you very much. I still have to stay up here, so.
We'll meet you back at the office.
Well, you're my right.
Change it where pummigated. Chief Manick is going to present that. It was presented in your read-ahead, and this is one of the requirements that we have to do annually. Chief?
Yes, hello again. So in accordance with the Texas Racial Profiling Law and with the Code of Conduct and the Sandra Bland Act, we're required to present an annual racial profiling report to the governing board and also to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. In addition, our report has to comply with the new legislative mandates under the Sandra Bland Act, Senate Bill 1849, that all law enforcement agencies that conduct motor vehicle stops will collect data and, for the stops, regardless of the dispositions of those stops. So in addition, we have to do a comparative analysis of those stops. So in the report that you all have, it's in page eight. As I turn to page three, I just want to highlight our department, motor vehicle stops. So altogether, we only had 294 stops, which is pretty good, I think, because I don't know if you were here from, not the year before, but the year before that, we only had 99 stops. Now we're up to 294 stops, so of the 294 stops, 146 were female, 148 were male. The reason for the stops is 245 were moving violations. So in other words, they were speeding or they didn't stop at the stop sign. Those were the results of the, 47 were traffic violations, which means like defective equipment, no front plate, no light, things like that. So the results of the 294 stops, we had 196 written warnings. One of the things that, when I got here, is I wanted to make sure that all our stops were documented. No more verbal stops. They had to be written, whether they're giving them a citation or an actual verbal warning. So all of them are documented. So we had 196 written warnings and 96 citations. And the last thing I want to cover is that, and we did have two arrests, but there was no physical force used in any, any of our traffic stops. We had no complaints on racial profiling during this rating period. The officers have done all the training that has to do with the Texas Racial Profiling Law, the Sandra Bland Act, and then also our policies and procedure. Every year, we go through our policies and procedures and just make sure that we are abiding by it. Overall, one of the things that is required is that we also have to do an audit, and we've done the audit, and, and the audit, again, did not reveal anything that was disproportionate as far as any racial profiling. In closing, I would be amiss if I didn't take this opportunity to thank Dr. Carter and Mr. Harmson and Ms. Shibley, as last year, we revised the racial profiling policy. That was just the beginning. We updated it, we changed it, and we significantly, significantly revamped the, and finalized our use of force policy. We really went through that policy. We teared it apart, and even after legal approval, Dr. Carter and Mr. Harmson just were not happy yet. So we, we worked on that, excuse me, we worked on it, and we worked on it, and I'm glad to report that we have an updated, revised use of force policy. While we were working on the use of force, use of force policy, former President Trump actually put out an executive order, 13929. He titled it Safe Policing for Safe Communities. I want to quote a portion of that order. It goes, "All Americans are entitled to live with the confidence that the law enforcement officers and agencies in their communities will live up to the, our nation's founding ideals and will protect the rights of all persons, particularly in African-American communities. We must redouble our efforts as a nation to swiftly address instances of misconduct." The executive order mandated, as part of safe policing for communities, in order to receive Department of Justice grant funding, either state, local, or university or college law enforcement agencies, we had to validate compliance with the DOJ's standards for certification on our use of force policy. The process for us, the credentialing for us, was through the International Association of Campus Law Enforcement Administrators. I'm happy to report that our college use of force policy was approved and certified on January 31st, 2021, and is valid for three years. So our policy was good. So again, thank you, Dr. Carter, Mr. Harmson, for working diligently on the policy and promoting Central Texas College overarching goal to focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion and becoming a center of excellence. Thank you. That concludes my report. Any question? Well, thank you, take care, and God bless.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Doing a great job.
Thanks, sir.
Next item we have is the legislative update. Mr. Sandoval will be here, and while he's coming up, I got to make a small correction up here.
I'll get it.
And now you've got one on the right of the speaker, where it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Chairman General Weber, trustees, Chancellor Yanopoulos and staff, for the record, I'm Rudy Sandoval, and I'm Chief Legislative and Government Relations. As of last Friday, March 12th, or actually at 6:00 PM, was a deadline for legislators to file bills for consideration. However, the filing deadline does not apply to local bills, concurrent resolutions, or simple resolutions. However, we don't fall into any of those, luckily. As of yesterday, there are 7,634 bills filed total. 5,300, 236 are in the House and 2,398 are in the Senate. We're tracking, CTC is tracking about 549 bills. 358 of those bills are in the House, 191 are in the Senate. Some of these bills are watch bills, are bills that I look at to make sure that they don't get attached to some of the things that we need to do. The others are enabling legislation, which allows legislation, and others are identical Some of these bills include appropriations, as you know, in fiscal matters. Others include elections, which have to do with, include education, higher education, and/or political subdivisions, which many times we fall under. Sometimes we don't, but the bill specifies that we don't, but by law, we're considered a political subdivision. Others are financial aid bills, others are governing board bills for the institution that deal with open meetings, public office, taxation. Also, many of the bills include a lot of human resources information, many of the operations of the institution. Right now, as you know, COVID, contracts, legal information, technology, minimum wage, just to name a few there. Of course, the public retirement system as well. Of course, they also include instructional services such as admissions, cybersecurity, dual credit, exemptions, tuition and fees, transfer credit, veterans, workforce. And many of our deputies and their departments and divisions work together on bills, although they have some specifically assigned to them. If you hear anything about legislation or legislative activity that causes you concern or I may have missed, please alert me. I appreciate to be before you and I'm glad to answer any questions.
I'd like to add, you know, Rudy, he made this sound, sound light and easy. He sits on that phone over there and on the computer, probably eight to nine hours a day, every day, listening to the testimony that goes on down there, and then he tries to digest it and regurgitate it to something we can, we can use and we can understand. One of the things, I guess, there's a lot of movement down there, and there's still a lot of movement with unfunded mandates. When I say unfunded mandates, the latest one was they're looking to give anybody who's an EMT, for example, that can go to school for free. Well, you know, somebody's got to pay for this. It's not for free, and they keep forgetting that. But they, they, they put these things out, and they'll vote those in, and the next thing we know, every EMT in Central Texas is going to want to come over here and take classes, and guess what? They're free. And we get no, no dollars from the state to accommodate that. So if, if you're in contact with any of our state reps or senators, and just remind them of that, that it, it sounds great, and it does them a lot of political good to, to do those things and to vote those things in, but the reality is, we can't continue to do these programs unfunded. So Rudy, thank you for keeping an eye on, on the hen house for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. You have a question?
I was looking to ask if there's another group besides EMT that would have this.
Rudy, is there another group besides EMT that we identified?
Right now, it's EMT, but they may be adding, which are the paramedics?
Right.
But they will break it out from there, and there's discussion on that currently. It might not make much movement, but we still have to watch it to make sure. They're becoming, the legislators are becoming a little more aware of the unfunded mandate. However, as you know, when they get into a group and start making pushes and decisions on it, then they kind of forget. But for the most part, they are looking at very closely and, and seeing where they're going to put some of those dollars.
Yeah, that hurts us, and that's not, those things aren't taken up through the budget process. So, you know, and they, they get together in a group, and he said that, but they'll say, well, you know, if, if you feel past this, I'll tag this on, and then this, this will ride, so I'll vote for your bill, you know? And then the next thing you know, we've got another unfunded mandate. It just keeps growing and growing. Once they do them, you can't, there's no getting them back. We've seen that now with firefighters, first responders, all of their, it used to be, if you took firefighting courses, those were free. If you took criminal justice courses, if you're a police officer, those are free. But now it's, if you are a criminal, if you're a police officer or a firefighter, every course you take is free. Yeah, so it doesn't stop.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to follow up on that and see if there's any more other, as we call them, unfunded mandates in there that, and, and provide that information.
Is that the current case, or will you be doing some of that?
No, ma'am. That is the case.
The police, yes?
That's, yes.
There, there's a, there's a big list in the front of your budget that I provide you of all the exemptions and waivers that we have to provide.
It's huge.
And, and it's, it's to the tune of, last year, it was about $9 million that we, that we basically didn't get tuition and fees for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. Our next item is the acquisition of the IBM Flash System 7200. Mr. Gaines?
My name is Cliff Gaines. I'm the Associate Deputy Chancellor over Information Technology. And today, I want to speak to you all about why it's a good idea for us to acquire new enterprise storage. First off, what we have currently is an IBM XIV Gen III. And the important thing to know about that particular device, which has served us very well, is that it's almost full. It's capable of 112 terabytes. We've got about 95 used. And the point is that, first off, it's going to cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars over the next three years just to maintain this device as it is. It'll cost us about an extra 100K to upgrade it to what we need it to be. And so what makes sense is to go with this next device, which is amazing to me, the size difference. You can see that's a huge cabinet. Weighs a ton, uses lots of electricity. This thing is the size of two large pizzas, capable of 200 terabytes, should accommodate our anticipated growth. And the thing to know is that it's all flash. It's all super fast, almost as fast as memory in a computer. The previous device still had a lot of spinning discs on the backside, just like your home PC does. They spin a little faster. But this is a new, a new step forward for, for a lot of data centers, including ours. Reliable, super fast, and will be a boon to us in many ways. Next slide, please. And so the bottom line is that over the next three years, it's going to cost us about 310K to keep the old device, add more storage, pay the maintenance, et cetera. It makes a great deal of sense to buy the newer, faster device for 260. It's just an easy calculation to make from my perspective. I do want to add that this was, it's in our budget, it was planned purchase, and there's a DIR contract which facilitates the acquisition of this device. And there's a DIR contract which facilitates the acquisition of this device. And really, that's pretty much it. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have, or, yes, sir?
Okay, so it's SSD, right?
Essentially, yes. SSD can be things other than flash, but it almost always is these days. But this is specifically, you know, NAND flash.
Do we have a redundancy beside, or if we have one, who's system fails, do we have a cloud storage or is there a redundancy?
Not for this device, and that's largely because of this expense. We've been running on this current XIV system. What we do have is a four-hour repair agreement with IBM. They're obligated to get here within four hours with the replacement part. And that's, you know, that's, that's the best we can do considering the cost. I would love to have a second one.
You know, it's, it's imperative that we move in this direction just because of the data. You know, more and more, we're having to rely on data and reports and the reports, reports are coming fast and furious and, and they're extensive. And so the ability to pull that data quickly, I know that we're, we're behind on one report to TACC right now because it just, it's, it's a loading problem and then getting that, that data out. So as soon as we can get that, so this, this makes it much more palatable for us. And I think going forward, we're going to have to start looking at data in terms of retention, in terms of student completions, in terms of what we do with our curriculum. And so it's going to be important that, that we move this way. And I, I agree with, with Cliff. Too bad we can't have two of them, but we'll get there someday.
Yes, sir. And, and one more thing with regard to your question about cloud, one of the things we're looking at, we do utilize cloud services in various ways. It's usually for third-party software that's, you know, hosted by the vendor themselves, that kind of thing. But one of the things we're starting to look at is cloud for disaster recovery. Basically placing images of all our virtual systems up in the cloud to be turned up, you know, if we were to lose our data center. So that's, we're looking at that currently.
I've got a question about the IBM 14 system we've got right now. We've, we've got it in place and it's been serving us for a long time.
Four years, yes, sir.
Yeah. What happens to the data that's stored there?
Yes, sir. So what we do is, one thing to mention is that the data on these devices is encrypted at rest. And what that means is, when it gets written to the storage medium, it's in an encrypted form. And so if somebody were to come in, you know, to break into our data center and wheel it out and try to get at the data that's in it, they can't do it. It's impossible. When we get rid of a device like this, what we do is we have a company come in and do a DoD wipe on all those discs and certify it. So we did that with the last device that we replaced and we'll do it with this one as well down the road.
So all that data will be transferred to the 7200?
Yes, it gets mirrored over, yes, sir, in a live state. And so there shouldn't even be any interruption in that process.
So what do we wind up then with capability with taking all the data that we've got saved on this new system? How much does that leave us to grow with?
Well, it leaves us with, you know, about 80 terabytes to grow with and that should be good for about four to six years, according to our projections. But another thing to mention is that there's a, there's a technology called deduplication in these devices, right? And the dedupe processes on this new system are far better. And so what that means is that that device is constantly looking for long, long strings of binary data that are exactly the same. Let's say you have five files copied up to that device, which are the same files, right? Somebody copies one up over here, somebody copies one up over there. It's going to read that and it's going to insert a pointer where that duplicate data is to, to the one set that it keeps. So it has a lot of technology built in to not waste space as much as is commonly wasted. So that, that 200 is really more like 230 or 240 when you take into account the dedupe capabilities.
And you think this is going to work for us?
Yes, I do.
For at least three years?
I, I'll go four or five this time. Yes, sir. It is, it's amazing to me what, what they've done. It's crazy.
Any other questions, Mr. Gaines? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Our next item is Enrollment Center, Building 119, the elevation, elevator project. Mr. Harmson, there you are.
Good afternoon. If you remember back, a little over a year ago, February of 2020, the Board had actually approved a, some design work for elevators in the Enrollment Center, which is Building 119, as well as the, the Morton Hall, Residence Hall, 120. But because of the uncertainties related to the pandemic at the time, we went ahead and put a delay or a hold on the, the design work for both those projects. But we are coming to the Board today to continue the elevator design work specifically in the Enrollment Center, Building 119. And then we can look at issuing an RFP for construction after September 1, when we would have dollars available in the capital budget to proceed with that work. There's a number of benefits that I had listed in the report that I had distributed. I will say, one of the main drivers in regards to focusing on the Enrollment Center at this time is the, the age of, I say that politely, I guess. I don't want to, Holly's here, she's going to try to keep me out of trouble. But as, as we do have a, a, a population that, you know, safety becomes a major concern for us and even with custodial services moving equipment around, it, that becomes a challenge when you're climbing up two flights of stairs. And certainly, we have done an excellent job within the Facilities and Construction Division trying to keep staff safe. And we would like to continue that. But, and, and so I won't go back over the, the added benefits that I have there. If there's some questions, I'll be more than happy to take them. The project costs are estimated at a little over $400,000. I have the breakdown there related to the design cost as well as the construction cost. So at this time, the administration recommends approval of PPK to continue the architectural engineering services work for the, for a new elevator at the Enrollment Services, Building 119.
Any questions, Mr. Harmson? Thank you, sir. And while you're still there, next item is the PPK contract renewal.
So as we get into a couple of these projects that we're going to be talking about, whether it's the elevator addition or some of the ADA services, we need to make sure that we have a active contract with PPK, who's the current architectural engineering firm. So I'm bringing this a little bit early, but I wanted to make sure that the Board was supportive of moving forward with PPK before I got involved in some of these other projects with them. So this is the second option period, which will extend from April of '21 to March of '22. So the administration recommends the exercise of the second option period with PPK in an amount not to exceed $750,000. That amount was based upon the elevator work as well as some additional work that we have for ADA, some other design services. Probably won't come to that, but it gives us a little bit of flexibility.
That'll be brought as an action item, sir, on, on next Tuesday.
Any, any question, Mr. Harmson? Okay, sir. The next item then is the PPK ADA Accessibility Architectural Engineering Services.
Right. So Dr. Carter touched on this a little bit. As we, we are in the process of issuing a request for qualifications for an, a, an ILA, an independent licensed architect, who is required by the Department of Justice. But there will be some design and engineering work that may be required for the project. So this will allow us to utilize PPK for architectural engineering services related to the accessibility project. We have identified that we should not exceed the $300,000 per year. That's just a guess. I don't know at this point if we have a complete idea as to what the total cost of the project is. But in talking with Cliff Winningstall from PPK, I think we both feel very comfortable that it will not exceed this amount.
That'll also be on the agenda?
Yes. This, all, all four of the items that I'm bringing forward today will be on the agenda for next Tuesday.
Any question, Mr. Harmson, on this issue? Okay, then we'll move on to the vendor approvals for the storm damage repairs, Mr. Harmson.
Right. I, I believe you had received some information just on the impact of the overall storm on the college. I won't go into detail. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have. We did have some extensive damage in three of the buildings. The Science Center, the, the most damage was done in the Technology Center and Space or Science Theater Building. And then the Campus Center here, down on the lower floor, had, had some issues as well. So what we did was we brought before you a list of nine vendors for approval. We're actively working with our insurance company. I just, we just signed some paperwork for them to upfront us a $2 million check to go ahead and assist with some of the, the repairs that we're expecting. I'm guessing that the cost estimates will be, will be higher than that. Well, I know that they're going to be higher than that. But rather than bringing each of these individually, we thought it made sense to go ahead and bring all of them as one group. All of these entities are either on a purchasing cooperative or we have a, an approved contract with them. So they all meet compliance for our state purchasing requirements. So with this, we'll be having a recommendation for the approval of all of these nine companies for storm damage repairs throughout campus.
Mark, can you speak to our insurance adjustment on all these?
So the, we've been in contact since day one with the insurance, with the insurance carrier. They assigned us two adjusters and then they've also assigned us some individuals who have been reviewing all cost information. They immediately were on site within a week or so, so I, I would have to give them praise for, for being very responsive to us. We have been in contact with each of these vendors, putting together quotes. Those quotes are being forwarded to the insurance adjusters for their review. And then they're getting back to us. Unfortunately, some of the repairs are probably going to, especially on the chillers, are going to take seven to 10 weeks. So they're working with us in a timely manner was critical. We hope that it won't take that long. But there's a number of other schools, banks, other institutions throughout the state who are in a, in a very similar situation. But up to this point, they've been very good. And like I said, they've been willing to agree to upfront us $2 million for helping with the overall repairs. The, and I don't want to misspeak, I'm sure Bob will correct me, but the, the funding for some of this additional work will need to be moved from reserves over into our operations. I'm assuming with some of the dollar repairs, they'll end up being probably capitalized. There, there are several buildings that the, the cost will be well over $100,000. And then we can utilize the dollars we're getting back reimbursed from the insurance company to replenish those, those reserves.
While we're talking about funds, a couple of questions. With the Federal Emergency Management Agency, supposedly as funds available to take care of some of the damages that happened, especially water damage and that kind of stuff. And the other one is the state of Texas helped cause this problem. Are there any funds from the state of Texas to help reimburse us for the damage that they caused of having us shut down everything? Did we investigate any of those sources?
We are working with the Deputy Chancellor Ted Gonzalez on some available options, as well as Deborah Shively. So I think we're still exploring those. I don't have an answer for you at this time. But we will certainly continue to go ahead and explore both options to see if there are some funds available that could assist us in making these repairs.
Sir, we are fortunate though that our insurance coverage is going to cover the vast, vast majority of this.
Well, I understand that, Bob, but we have to pay the insurance premiums. What I'm talking about is getting money from these federal agencies who supposedly have a, have a blank checkbook.
The only problem with those are is then, then we have the option of doing one or the other. You can't collect from the insurance company and FEMA both. So if we want to just go the other route, we can, but then I'm going to argue, well, we've been paying premiums. Whether we use those premiums or not, the rest of the state of Texas is going to use those premiums. Our rates are going to go up whether we use that insurance or not. So since we've been paying it, I would prefer that because from the counterparts that I've talked to that deal with FEMA, the folks on the coast, some of them are still waiting to collect from that hurricane 10 years ago, their final dollars. So if, if, if we were to use FEMA, which I'd be more than glad to do it, I promise you, most of us working here, we won't have the money by the time we're done working here. And, and the insurance company, as Mark said, is already willing to front load everything up to our deductible. And the deductible, we're like $10,000?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I'm sorry. So while we do have some, some out-of-pocket, it's minimal. I'm hoping the second piece that you talked about from the state of Texas will come through on those numbers. And it's, and it's, it's not, and nothing's finalized yet. There's nothing we can even apply for because they're still trying to figure out where they're going to get the pieces of pie from them. But, but that piece would probably be much more benefiting for us.
Well, thank you for working on it, Bob. Appreciate the information.
Thank you, Mark. As you, as all of you can tell from the discussion, we've had multiple discussions about this over the last two or three weeks, even while we were hunkered down at, at home, listening to Mark and his, his staff try to fix things out here, so.
I, I will mention one final thing and I think that it was touched on, I think, General Weaver, you touched on it. I, I think having our staff who are willing to venture out during the, the icy conditions. We had the police department here. We had folks from all facilities and construction respond from custodial, grounds, building maintenance, mechanical maintenance. I think had they not done that, the damages throughout campus would have been significantly worse. So I, I really want to, you know, acknowledge the fact that they were willing to, to do that. They didn't have to, but I think that shows that the, that they really appreciate Central Texas College and are willing to do that, go that extra mile to go ahead and support the college.
And we, the, the administration authorized Mark to do, to do something for them. So they'll get, they'll get a little kudos for that.
Thank you, Mr. Harmson. Our next item is the Board document number 441, Notice of the Cancellation of the Trustee Regular Election. Ms. Havens?
Yes.
We don't have anybody else that's signed up for the election, so therefore we don't have to have one. Is that correct?
That is correct. Unopposed races. So we're able to cancel the election with this board document.
And it will be an action item, sir, on Tuesday.
Right. We have to vote to approve that as a board. And just let you all know, the reason we're doing it is because no one challenged the two trustees who signed up for another term.
And then this notice gets posted on Election Day at each of the precincts.
Alrighty. And next item is recommending topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements. And we can start, I guess, Scotty?
I have, just have one, General Weaver. I'm sure the administration has already considered this, but the school and/or the Board should be, be willing to create a, an appreciation for Don Armstrong's family and death of his wife.
I can respond. We have, Debbie will do the usual flowers, but Dr. Carter's been in contact with Mr. Armstrong and they're setting up a scholarship, endowed scholarship fund, so.
We do not have any amendments for executive session today. And our next meeting is set for next week. That'll be our Board meeting and we'll take items for action to vote on at that meeting. And you heard the discussion today, so the notes that you have is applicable for that meeting also. And just a reminder to all those, eventually, we're going to have some people from SACS SOC down here and we've got the mission statement, the vision and the strategic policies. Every two weeks when we have our meetings, they're published at least two times a month. Everybody, if you get asked about that, the answer is yes, we have them. They're in place. Do you have to memorize them to regurgitate them? No. But it'd not be a good idea if you know they're coming on campus to put this in your pocket and say, by the way, we have it right here.
You might read, just so you know what it says. Dr. Garrett will be proud of you, I can tell you.
And with that, we stand adjourned.